Any agenda item comments? Okay, thank you. Next item, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snideman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes. All those opposed, nay? Sorry, motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move to the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 74, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, to establish a pumped sanitary sewer district and other updates. Item C2, consider approving a professional development training program for the Director of Police Services. C3, consider approving an update to the Police Department's current agreement with Comcast for dedicated internet service.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. General Calendar. Item G1, consider approval of an extension of the contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation for the 2022 Sidewalk Repair Program.
Madam Supervisor, I'm going to... I'm going to put this into one motion. I move to approve an extension of the contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation for the completion of the 2022 Sidewalk Repair Program and authorize Municipal Services Department to put the contract in place upon receipt of the proposed unit rate increase, provided their unit rates are held within a minimum five, a maximum 5% increase over the 2021 rates, and to approve a purchase order not to exceed the board authorized budget amount.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. In January 2017, Canton Township publicly bid the annual sidewalk repair program, which includes work in the subdivisions, on the primary roads, sidewalk gaps, and incidental flatwork on township properties. The board awarded a contract to Rotundo Construction Corporation for the 2017 program and has extended their contract for four additional years, 2018 through 2021, based on satisfactory and improving performance each year and stable prices. Rotundo has displayed superior performance during the 2021 program when compared to previous contractors, and their performance has improved over the years. Rotundo has a clear understanding of the expectations of the township in repair and replacement of sidewalks in 88 pedestrian facilities. During each year that the contract has been renewed, the township has agreed to increase in their unit costs based on material pricing only, which they document. Although the concrete supplier does not have their 2022 pricing available at this time, the township has requested that Rotundo provide these costs as soon as they are available from the plant. It is understood that material cost inflation is a concern in the industry overall, and any allowable increase will be based on verified concrete pricing from the supplier. For these reasons and based on the details provided below, Engineering Services requests to extend the contract with Rotundo for 2021. Time is of the essence to start the program in April, and the sidewalk hearing will be set at the next Board of Trustees meeting. Let me see. So, Mr. David, do you have anything to add?
Nothing else to add from Municipal Service Division.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Tanya?
Yeah, I just had a comment that, you know, at the beginning of the year, last year, we talked about responsible contracting and putting together an ordinance for that. And I was hoping that, you know, in the future, if we are renewing contracts, or if we can put in the ordinance in place, and maybe it's a time to think about the responsible contracting ordinance when we are working with contractors, because maybe add that as a factor while, while we work with future contracting agreements or renewing them. So, I know Rotundo has worked great with us. They're the best in providing us with the services for the sidewalk gap, sidewalk programs, repair program that we need. And maybe that's something we consider in the future while extending their contracts.
Thank you. We are working on that right now. The board, the staff is, and we should have that to the board very soon.
So, I just was wondering, for the sidewalk repair program, does that also include the subdivisions that are part of Parma? Or is that separate?
I'm not sure about that, but I could check on that for you, Trustee Berninski.
All right, thank you.
Pretty sure it's separate. I think Parma ends up hiring most of the contractors to do the work in Parma, and we contribute money into Parma to do their sidewalks.
Okay, I was just curious, because I think that there are subdivisions that were, that are in Parma that were supposed to get sidewalk work done last fall that, due to weather, was not able to be completed. So, just wanted to make sure that if, if it happened to be Rotundo, that we make sure that anything that was part of the sidewalk repair program for last year is complete.
Can follow up with you on that?
Just to clarify on that, so we go out and evaluate in the, in those subdivisions, right? But we may not get, be the ones that get the work done?
We'll have to double check and get back to you on that one. I know we have to contribute a certain fee each year into the Parma. I guess I need to verify if that's just for the roads or if that's for the roads and the sidewalk, but we will, we will get back to you. I know in the past, my subdivision, for example, a couple of years ago, was supposed to be part of the sidewalk repair program, and things got delayed, and they got done this, this year. So, I know they do catch, they are catching up on previous years when they were running behind. So, we'll double check that if there was somebody in Parma that was supposed to be part of Rotundo, that they're going to be part of this, and we'll get back to you on that.
If it's not Rotundo, then understanding how we follow up to make sure that the work got done, since we're not contracting it, would be good. Thanks.
We have Bill Surcheck, who has raised his hand, would like to speak to us.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, go ahead, Bill. You are on mute. So, go ahead. There you go.
The, the Parma, it is a separate organization, and we intend to use Rotundo last year for sidewalk repairs. He's going to do work in Parma next year. We were, he was unable to do the work last year. So, they're, they're unrelated, but they both, both the township program and the Parma program, we ran out of time for the amount of work that needed to be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval for the creation of two full-time tech fours for the Facilities Department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of two full-time tech fours for the Facilities Services Department and approve the attached budget amendments.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. During the study session on January 18th, 2022, MSD presented a request to create two full-time tech fours to the Facilities Team. In exchange to offset budget costs, Facilities will not move forward with the recruitment and hiring of five part-time facilities' custodial maintenance assistants. Do you want to add anything to that, David?
Nothing, nothing at this time.
Okay. Any board questions or comments?
Just wondering if it was Treasurer Slavens or me that seconded that.
At the same time, so.
Okay.
That's fine, I didn't hear you. That's fine.
I'm probably too loud.
That's what threw me off. I couldn't hear Treasurer Slavens, and so I was like...
They're always throwing their voices over here.
Maybe I wanted it.
We both did, I think it was an echo.
I think it was me.
No, I don't think it was you.
I'll make a quick comment, if you don't mind.
What's that?
Just, just real quick. Hopefully, having the two, creating the two full-time positions will help employ a couple more people, because I know that the Facilities is short staffed, so I'm hoping this helps with that.
Yes, and this was discussed during the, the board sessions that we had a couple weeks ago. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G3, consider approval of a budget amendment, purchase order, and contract award for a construction management firm for the capital improvement plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract and approve a purchase order for construction management services to the Albert M. Higley Company in connection with the capital improvement plan for an amount not to exceed $805,809, based on $8.5 million of capital projects, and to increase the purchase order listed, Plant Moran Cressa, for $60,691, and to approve the attached budget amendment for 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski.
This time, oh my goodness. Clerk Seeger was quiet this time.
Steven was at you.
Yep.
By Treasurer Slavens, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The approved four-year capital improvement plan is dedicated to repairing and replacing capital throughout the township. In order to achieve better pricing as well as expediting services, our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, recommended that we request proposals from qualifying CM firms, locking in prices for the balance of the current projects. Our representative from Finance, Municipal Services, and Plant Moran Cressa reviewed the proposals and heard presentations from each firm, and are recommending awarding a contract to the Albert M. Higley Company for a multi-year contract for percentage fee of approximately 2.25% based on capital improvements of $8,500,000, pre-construction services in an amount of $14,559, and a not-to-exceed amount of $600,000 for onsite personnel costs, general conditions, or increased capital improvement costs. Onsite personnel costs will be evaluated with each of the five bid packages, as they are reviewed for recommendation to the board at future meetings. Capital improvement plan projects and services are to be paid from 401-261.801-0050 Capital Projects Fund Professional Services. We are recommending a 2022 budget amendment of $805,809 to transfer funds into the CIP Fund to cover this cost to ensure adequate budget for current projects and construction management services. This will only be utilized once the current bond money has been fully spent. An agreement between Canton Township and the Albert M. Higley Company will be reviewed and approved by Canton's legal staff prior to being signed by the township supervisor. In addition, Plant and Moran Cressa was approved a multi-year contract to the owner's representative on February 23rd, 2021. The RBA awarded their contract for a 2022 PO increase of $60,691. This increase will need to be added as a budget amendment.
David, do you have anything to add?
Only that we're, that MSD is very excited about getting going. This will be the, the last step before we start getting projects done.
Okay, I do have someone from Plant Moran Cressa on. I didn't know if he wanted to say, hang on, let me. Okay, Kevin Donnelly, did you want to say anything about the agenda item?
I think it was very well put in how it was presented. I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have, and as David put it, we're excited to get our last team member on board and start moving the program forward.
Okay. Any board questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion approved. Item G4. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you.
Item G4, consider approval of the purchase of John Deere Gator XUV 835M.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Hudson John Deere for an amount not to exceed $22,836.04 for the purchase of a new 2022 John Deere Gator XUV 835M.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snideman. Thank you. Our public work staff operates and maintains the township's Rouge River Recreational Trail System. In order to provide the necessary level of service, the smaller type of equipment is necessary. The new 2022 John Deere Gator is to be purchased from Houston John Deere in South Lyon, Michigan. The quote received from Hudson John Deere coincides with the Michigan Deal Contract number Michigan AG Grounds and Roadside as listed government sales contract. David, do you have anything to add to this?
Since I have experience working on a trail, and some of my former positions and my role with friends at the Rouge, I was excited that we can keep maintaining that great trail that Canton has.
Steven?
Yeah, I'm glad to see we're getting this. I would like to mention, I know some people last year, in the last two years, have talked about our trails have, in some cases, not been maintained as they had been in the past, and due to COVID and things like the pandemic. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing it this coming season being brought back up to standard, especially for biking. There's some areas that actually could be quite dangerous right now for bikers. So, I, I think we should discuss that and make sure that that's being handled.
Absolutely, Trustee. We'll take care of that.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G5, consider approval of a, of purchase of police vehicles for 2022 and an associated budget amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve issuing a purchase order for the purchase of seven vehicles in the amount of $256,593 from Signature Ford located at 1960 East Main Street, Owasso, Michigan, 48867. Funds to come from the account number listed, police capital outlay vehicles, and to approve the following, the attached budget amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. MSD Fleet Services evaluates all vehicles that meet the minimum replacement criteria each year and recommends replacements as part of the capital improvement program process. This year, seven police vehicles are budgeted for replacement to meet the services needs of the police department. The township will again utilize existing publicly bid government pricing contracts administered through Macomb County for the purchases from Signature Ford. The units taken out of service will be rotated elsewhere in the fleet and/or be auctioned off using our online auction site, Bidcorp.com for disposal. The vehicles that are proposed to be purchased have all been evaluated for alternative fueling sources, including electric. It should be noted that all the police vehicles will be hybrid models this year due to limited availability of fully electric vehicles at this time. The total value of the purchases for 2022 is $256,593. The police department approved budget amount is $255,000 and will require a budget amendment.
Director Baugh, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry, this would be under, yes, do you have anything to add? And then we can ask.
I do not, other than that this is moving forward with greeting the fleet.
Yeah, of course, the, these will be seven hybrid explorers. And just a little context, looking at the data right now, just under 26,000 pounds of CO2 output will be reduced, according to Ford's manual on these vehicles. The increase also has a, there's going to be an indicator on the vehicle for safety reasons, so allows the officers to see on a, on a display when someone's walking up to the vehicle for their safety.
Questions or comments? That's great, this helps meet some of our goals, thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G6, consider approval of payment for Burlington Sanitary Sewer Lead Failure Emergency Repairs.
I move to, Madam Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order for payment to Fortified Plumbing in the amount of $17,000 for the Burlington Sanitary Sewer Lead Emergency Repair.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by, is that you, Tanya? Treasurer Slavens, thank you. On January 12th, 2022, we received a call from a resident regarding a sewer backup on Burlington. The township DPW immediately dispatched a sewer tech to investigate. The resident had a contractor onsite trying to locate the problem. Sewer department employees put a camera in the lead and found it was broken underneath the road, needed to be repaired immediately. In accordance with Section 74, 133, letter Q of the Township Ordinance and policy attached to this RBA, approval of this work is requested. Below is a timeline of events that have happened. On January 12th, 2022, resident calls DPW for assistance with sewer backup, and DPW employees are dispatched. Resident contractor had already started digging across the street, trying to locate the problem. January 13th, 2022, DPW employees TV sewer lead and find broken lead, I'm sorry, lead under road, and temporary drainage was installed. January 18th, 2022, contractor removes section of road and completes repair. David, do you want to add anything to this?
Just a couple of things on this is, there's some issues in the ordinance that, that governs this particular situation, that MSD is working with the legal department to make some changes. There's also a call for, there's a policy question here that MSD is going to work, again, with legal department, that, that this, this kind of situation is not going to arise in the future to impact the township, so.
Questions or comments from anyone? No? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G7, consider resolution to adopt water and sewer rates and charges pursuant to Canton Code of Ordinances, Part 1, Chapter 74, entitled Utilities, Article 2, Section 4, 74-83.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the following resolution for setting water rate and sewer rates and charges. Whereas Canton Township's water and sewer system is primarily dependent upon water and sewer rate and charges for its funding, whereas the rate structure should be designed to generate revenues adequate to properly operate and maintain the water and sewer system to comply with regulatory requirements, to fund water system capital projects, and to meet debt service requirements. And whereas Canton Code of Ordinances, Part 1, Chapter 74, entitled Utilities, Article 2, Section 4, Subsection 74 through 83, authorizes the Township Board to adopt by resolution the water and sewer rates and charges via resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board, Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, that the water and sewer rates and charges as specifically described, specifically described in Exhibit A, attached here too, are hereby adopted, and be further resolved that the rates established by the resolution shall be effective on the same date as the publication of the changes to Chapter 74, Utilities, Article 2, Township Water and Sewer Systems, Division 1, Generally, and Division 2, Financial Matters, dated this 8th day of February 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Currently, the Township Board is in the process of amending Canton Township Ordinance, Chapter 74, to include the Lots Road Sewer District Pump Station Charge and other updates to the ordinance included in the series of amendments as a provision that the Township Board will adopt water and sewer rates, fees, or charges annually or at any other time that is in the best sound financial operation of the water and sewer system via resolution. This resolution would adopt the current rates, fees, or charges without changes at this time. David, do you have anything to add?
No, I just want, I, I know I talked to the treasurer a little bit early, that this, this doesn't show any changes in rates and fees at this time. It's, it's basically a housekeeping matter, but we'll be coming back with finance and MSD when we get to the water rates later on this month, early March.
Thank you. Any board comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G8, consider approving the renewal of an animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society for 2022.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposed contract with Michigan Humane Society for animal sheltering services from March 1, 2022 to February 28, 2023, in the total amount of $37,000, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2021 Police Animal Care Account.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Police Department is requesting approval to renew a one-year contract with the Michigan Humane Society, the Westland Shelter, for the township's animal sheltering needs. The proposed 2022 renewal agreement remains consistent with previous years at a flat monthly rate of $2,795 for the boarding and handling of animals. Additional specialty service fees as needed are listed in the contract and also remain consistent with the previous agreement. Director Baugh, do you have anything to add?
Well, there's only two in the area that we're most comfortable with, or are closest to our municipality, and we switched to Westland back in '14 because of an incredible price increase from the shelter in the Ann Arbor area. So, we're going to continue to look at the prices over the next year, make sure it's the best place to be, but back in '14, there was over a 400% increase on us, so that's why we made the switch.
Questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G9, consider approving a memo of understanding with Growth Works for the expansion of Canton's youth diversion program and associated 2022 police budget amendments.
Madam Supervisor, I would ask that the board allow me to recuse myself from this vote, as I have a conflict of interest and serve both on the Township Board and I serve on the Board of Growth Works Incorporated, and it would be improper for me to vote on this contract.
All those in favor have the motion?
We need a motion.
So, I would, I would just ask for somebody to do that, and then I would have maybe somebody, I've actually never done this, I've never had to recuse myself before. I imagine someone has to make a motion, it has to be seconded, it would be voted on, I would recuse myself from that vote. Once that vote is done, I would abstain from any debate, discussion, or any voting on this issue. This is the first time for this board.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to recuse Clerk Seeger from this vote.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
And I think in the past, Michael, the recused person has gone and sat down in the audience.
I would ask that, since I will maintain my role as Secretary to the Board, that I stay seated to continue to take notes.
I don't have a problem with it.
Madam Supervisor?
Sure, that's fine. Could someone please read the motion?
I move to approve the one-year memo of understanding with Growth Works to expand Canton's youth diversion program. Additionally, I move to approve the below amendment to the 2022 police budget in the accounts listed below.
Motion made by Trustee, Trustee Summer, and supported by Treasurer Slavens. Let's see, let me go to the top here really quick. Whoops. The Police Department is requesting board approval of a one-year memo of understanding, MOU, expanding their youth diversion program with Growth Works to include funding for out-of-county residents to participate in the rehabilitation services offered. The Department is also requesting an amendment to the 2022 police budget in the amount of $25,000 in forfeiture funds for this expanded service opportunity. Director Baugh, do you want to add anything?
No, we spoke a number of times through study sessions about this opportunity for children who live outside our county, allows us to, to provide that service through Growth Works. And the funds are restricted to $25,000 annually. A little context would be, last year, it was $1,100 for two children that are out, so.
Questions or comments?
Quick comment. I'm glad we are getting this done. It's a conversation we've been having for a while, and as a matter of equity, since we have children who attend our schools who are not part of Wayne County, and so I'm glad we're making this happen. Thank you to Director Baugh for his hard work on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G10, consider diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative for township employees and award contract to Michigan Roundtable.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve $75,000 in funding toward Canton Township's You Belong Here strategic plan to Michigan Roundtable for the purpose of Canton's diversity, equity, inclusion initiative, and the necessary related budget adjustment noted below.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. The You Belong Here strategic plan contains five goals, one of them being a welcoming community. A major goal of the plan is the training of staff, leadership, and elected officials on cultural awareness and servant leadership. The vision of welcoming community is to have a township in which all residents can fully and effectively access services, influence policy and direction, and feel a sense of belonging and safety. Canton Township will partner with the Michigan Roundtable for diversity and inclusion on a diversity, equity, inclusion initiative, DEI. The DEI initiative will analyze existing strengths and weaknesses related to DEI and help Canton build on the strengths of the organization. The initiative will evaluate existing township programs to help synergize inclusion efforts across the organization. It will provide insight on best practices for DEI in local government. The DEI initiative will help Canton develop a statement of principle for DEI in the township. The initiative will also perform a professional training program to increase awareness, knowledge, and skills of the staff on DEI issues. Canton Township is committed to a goal of creating an environment that is equitable and accessible to all individuals, and is committed to taking appropriate actions to integrate diversity, equity, and inclusion across all township operations. In April of 2021, an RFP was sent out through Human Resources seeking to partner with the In April of two thousand twenty-one, an RFP was sent out through Human Resources seeking to partner with an organization that could assist us with integrative techniques and strategies for inclusivity and collaborate to devise a plan to create and evaluate progress of DEI efforts with our employees. The RFP received nine responses. The top two applicants were chosen and evaluated on several attributes. A committee consisting of Trustee Foster, Trustee Ganguly, Supervisor Graham Hudek, and the Michigan Human Resources Manager reviewed the proposals and after a lengthy evaluation chose Michigan Roundtable. This RFP is to approve funding of seventy-five thousand dollars and move forward with the township's DEI initiative as soon as the new Human Resources Manager comes aboard, which is February fifteenth. That is, I think I said enough. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the board? Diane?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I'm very excited for this to happen because we live in a very diverse community. And as a township government, our main responsibility is to provide the services to the community. And I think this initiative will enhance that and will make us, will make our services more accessible to every resident.
Thank you. Sarah?
Just want to note that this program is not simply a diversity and inclusion training. It is a lengthy program that the employees of Canton Township will go through. And I'm very excited that we are able to bring this here along with the You Belong Here exhibit.
Else?
I'd just say I'm glad to see us meeting another one of our goals by doing this. I think it's going to be great.
Definitely. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. That's great. Now we have the add-on G eleven.
Steven knows the title if you need your help. Call back to earlier.
Let me see, here it is. Consider approving budget amendment and headcount adjustment for the clerk's office.
Madam Supervisor, I move to increase the headcount in the clerk's office by adopting the Merritt Commission's recommendation of a grade six position titled Record and Data Specialist and to amend the budget attached.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The clerk's office has seen a historic increase in demand and professional scrutiny. With the passage of Proposal eighteen-three and with public skepticism over elections, the clerk's office struggled to meet demand during the two thousand twenty election cycle. Meeting the demand required several employees from other departments, part-time staff, and contract workers. The clerk's office two thousand twenty model is unsustainable for long-term operations. The township clerk has performed an evaluation of the clerk's office and a comparison of several aspirational clerk's offices in the state of Michigan. The clerk has identified a need for a records and data specialist position. This position will serve as a conduit for a centralized records management approach and increased professionalism in the clerk's office while providing better services to the residents. The clerk believes this addition will assist in meeting the board goals of a welcoming community, quality infrastructure, and organizational climate and culture. Clerk Seeger, did you want to add anything?
I have talked to this board and the Merritt Commission ad nauseam about this position. I believe, given the input we have had and the presentations I have done, it would be almost a criminal disservice to this organization to continue talking about this, so I will stop at that.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? Please, anybody, public comment? Please, sir, come up to the podium, give your name and response, three minutes, and please state your case. And if you have any issues, we can get back to you with any responses.
George Miller, I'd like to touch on a couple, few things. I see in the Canton focus that it was a hundred and fifty ton, correct me if I'm wrong, of pollution taken out of the air. I mentioned here in the last meeting or two, especially over there on Hannah Road where the disposal sites are and over on Lily Road and Michigan Avenue area. Has anyone looked into the impact that that gas being burned off on those facilities, what they're doing? Secondly, I'd like to know, we're, we're putting on a copper roof, correct, on the summit? Is that correct? Okay. I'd like to know if the contractor is going to use solder, if it's going to be lead-free. Because there's nearby ponds, it could affect the runoff from the building. There'll be a lot of seams, and it's a big roof. There'd be a big runoff on it. Secondly, I would like to know on the tree program. Township owns a facility on Morton Taylor Road, south of Michigan there. I'd like to know, and spend maybe at least five or 10 years when you're going to start planting trees on it. And what the ordinance calls for some of these other facility, dump facilities to plant trees on it. You enforce it on other people? I don't know why it's not being enforced there possibly. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment, I will look online here. Let me see. Any public comment from our attendees online? I don't see any hands. Public comment, public comment? No public comment. Okay, public comment is closed. What a board comment. Do I want to do it there first?
See, there's no board comment?
Yes, what a board comment.
I don't have anything at this moment.
Um, I don't know, my mind is preoccupied.
Okay, I've done your, Kate?
Board comment?
If I would like to recognize that February is Black History Month.
Go.
Thank you. Steven?
No, nothing to add.
And, yep, I'd like to add besides Black History Month, February is American Heart Awareness Month. And I know a lot of us wore red on the fourth for Go Red. So it's important everybody recognize heart health. Besides that, I want to remind our residents, taxes are due on Monday, the fourteenth, by the end of the day, four-thirty. We had a big snowstorm, so you never know what the weather is going to be like, so it's always good to try and pay a little early. And we close at four-thirty. We do have a drop box, so if you don't make it in time, please put it in the drop box. And on Tuesday, when we come into work, we will stamp those as paid on Monday.
Pay online too, right?
And you can pay online, absolutely.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. There's been a lot of talk about Canton Center Road. We are abundantly aware that it is atrocious. Three full-time elected officials went to Lansing to try to browbeat both our legislators and the individuals responsible for doling out all of the money that they've been doling out. If you look today, or maybe yesterday, they issued a one-point-two billion dollar spending plan out of the, out of the Senate. So they are spending money. We're trying to have them spend it here in Canton Township. We're trying to get your taxpayer dollars back here from Lansing. And we are focusing on Canton Center Road. I don't know if you were planning on talking about this, Supervisor Graham Hudek, but if you were, I will stop talking now. Okay, beautiful. But yeah, so it has been patched temporarily, and that stretch of road is on the township's plan to be addressed this year. Before you say, oh my gosh, they're just going to do what was done before and it will be bad like in another year, which is a very common comment that you might hear. And I understand that because I've lived in Michigan for all of my life and I have seen the evidence. Please look to the other Canton Township Local Roads Program repairs that we have done, judge that quality. It has been in operation since two thousand and eighteen, and that work is, is, is holding up. And additionally, our plan is to get rid of one hundred percent of the concrete that has ASR or concrete cancer, as the local newspaper has labeled it. So we will pull all of that out. We do not want to throw good money after bad by doing temporary fixes. We want to do the real fix. So there will be some short-term pain. Please drive slowly, be careful, and report potholes to the county. And know that your local elected officials and your local public officials, both employees and otherwise, are working hard to bring about that fix.
Thank you. In adding on to that, I had two businesses call and ask actually when the Canton Center fix was going to start as they know that it is on our five-year strategic plan for two thousand twenty-two. And their concern was that when it is underway, that their businesses would be blocked and shut them down. And we will work very hard to make sure that doesn't happen. And we will not be shutting down all of Canton Center Road and blocking businesses. That's not our business. We won't do that. We'll be very careful about that and work with the businesses closely. There was another question on the copper roof. The copper roof is already completed, and I know that one of our engineers is working on a response to that. So you should have a response, and I will just make sure they also talk to you a little bit about the solder. And we'll get some information on the Republic gas being off and then also the tree program. Okay, great. So board comment, any other board comments? Okay, I think we have one more agenda item.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for, under the, for the purposes under MCL fifteen point two six eight or the Open Meetings Act, Section Eight, Subsection H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Support.
Made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Do a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Berninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seeger, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Session, just, okay, can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board return from closed session at nine thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, seconded by Trustee Snyderman. Clerk Seeger, please take roll call.
It would be a simple aye.
That's an aye, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We already did board comments, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.